Okay, let's call the board, please rise for a moment of silence. This is the flight. Salute to the flight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Lord God, who is God, who is God, who is God.
So tonight, we're here for Amazon to present their vision for the district and their plans up the road here. At this time, we will have public comment only on that one agenda item. That will continue for the lawyers.
So I'd like to introduce Becky Ford from AWS. You are the economic analyst.
Economic development.
Development. And she's going to do a brief presentation. And then I welcome the board to ask any questions when she's done.
Board members, thank you very much for allowing us some time this evening to talk a little bit about the investment and the project we are working towards in Salem Township. With me tonight is Rich Williams, who is helping to support our incentive conversation.
Slide over a little bit. Thank you.
Brought along a brief video that I would like to share with you. The video reflects what a transformational investment this has the potential to be in Salem Township and of course, Burbank area school district as a member of the tax district, as well as an integral part of the community with which we would partner in order to help the talent pipeline, the support surrounding that investment. This is an example of an investment that we made in Virginia more than 15 years ago and recently announced an expansion. And what it basically says is that we invested and things went well and the governor was more than happy to talk about additional investment in the state over time.
In the Commonwealth of Virginia, the last 18 years has supported thousands and thousands of jobs. The partnership has stood the test of time and that's why we're so excited that that partnership is expanding in such a large way. The tax contributions are huge for our counties. For every dollar that a county invests, there's $13 that comes back to them from this ecosystem. So this is truly an engine of economic opportunity, which is why Virginia is so proud to be the international center of data center activity because of what it does for our Commonwealth.
I was doing a math on this last night. Our budget per year is roughly around $55 million and they're going to do $6 billion. So my math was, and I'm not very good at math, but it was 106 years for us to make that up in our current budget. The MATA-PD project will allow Caroline County to expand our fire and rescue services, provide for better schools, improve our roads, help with future business recruitment, improve and improve the quality of life for our citizens while lessening their tax burden. I just want to say this past weekend, we opened our first ever county-owned fire station down in Caroline. And so that was huge to us and that took a long time to think about how little Carolina is having our first county-owned fire station. And it's investments like this and money like this coming in, we need more.
Very seldom do we get to be part of something that's transformational. But for the folks of Louisa County and truly for central Virginia, the counties that are represented here in the Commonwealth, this is a transformational opportunity. And I want to put this into perspective from a board of supervisors and local representative point of view. Our citizens come to us all the time and want to make sure that we have great school systems, that we have great school teachers, that we have emergency services that can answer the call. We are able to have this type of opportunity, this type of investment, meet the demands of our citizens and our responsibility, yet preserve the character of the county because it is such a small footprint. And that makes this exactly the type of opportunity that when we ask our folks in the county to go out and bring us quality investment, that's what AWS has done and that's what's happening in Louisa County.
Sponserian County is proud to have AWS as a new member of our thriving business community. The company has a...
I'm going to stop it there. The video goes on for another couple of minutes and I'm happy to share the link. But the important thing was to help communicate to the folks in this room tonight, the range of opportunities that come along with the investment. As many of you know, we have purchased property from town and are in the process of working with the township on a master plan that if approved, will enable us to build a number of data centers and investments similar to what you've heard the folks on that video talk about. So I'm going to hand the microphone to Jeff, Rich, and let you talk a little bit more about the LURDA process and where we are with township, where we'd like to see the school board.
Thanks. My name is Rich Williams. I am a local council assisting AWS in connection with this project. And just to give you a little bit of background as to what's transpiring here locally, as you all probably know quite a bit about, just as Wendy had said, just as Becky had said, AWS has purchased 1,062 acres in Salem Township. They comprise approximately 37 different parcels. So if you look at the Luzerne County Tax Parcel Identification Numbers, there are 37 different parcels. And on each of those parcels, AWS will be building, just as referenced in the video, a data center campus with approximately 15 buildings, up to 15 buildings proposed at the current time. So AWS has filed, has received essentially a zoning change, or I should say an overlay district within Salem Township. The property is primarily zoned A1 agricultural, but in order to facilitate the development of the property for data center complexes, the township has essentially passed an overlay which would facilitate the rollout of these, development of these buildings over the next few years. So that's already in place. In addition to that, AWS in the coming weeks will be filing a master plan, just as Becky had referred to, which will also propose and streamline the development process for each of these buildings over the next few years. So in addition to the land development and land use entitlement process currently tending within Salem Township, AWS has also approached Salem Township with respect to a potential for a LURDA district. And what LURDA does is allows a municipality or any governmental agency such as the school district, the county, and the township to essentially offer tax abatements over a period of up to 10 years for a particular project. The first part of that process is to essentially have the land declare the deteriorated area or economically distressed for LURDA purposes. That has been done and in the middle of May, Salem Township has adopted a resolution basically declaring the Amazon property, the 1,062 acres, as being distressed. So we're currently in the process of discussing potential abatement with the township. Nothing has been decided upon yet. That's where that stands at the current time, but we're actively pursuing that with the township. And of course, we're looking for other partners as well in terms of both the school district and Luzerne County for potential abatement. So this is somewhat of an introduction to AWS and basically what AWS is trying to do, at least to give the district some type of background or some type of, you know, at least an introduction as to AWS and what's basically going on within Salem Township and within the area. And due, like I said, due to the costs that are involved in developing something of this size, site development costs alone are several million, I should say over $100 million to develop the property itself. So Amazon would like to at least discuss with the district in the coming weeks in terms of a potential abatement for the project as well. I'll ask Becky if she wants to offer anything else. I'm certainly willing to answer any questions you might have with respect to the process too, but I'll ask Becky.
I know when we met about a week ago, part of the conversation was around jobs, the jobs created as a result of the investment. We do anticipate several hundred jobs attributable directly to AWS as well as several hundred additional jobs related to vendors and contractors that would support the campus full-time. There are, in addition to that, construction contractors and vendors that will be installing biropdics and off-site infrastructure, water and wastewater. Those folks will be on-site throughout the development of the campus. We expect that timeframe to be roughly five to seven years, although it could be more. So those jobs associated with site development are essentially considered long-term as well. We're currently working with the folks at the State Department of Commerce to connect to the local community college system and we would hope to partner with the school district in order to help put programs in place for training of that talent pipeline so folks who would be working in the data centers and helping to support those on a regular basis. Happy to answer any questions. I know we've reviewed a lot of information about the campus timeline. I'm not sure if we hit that appropriately or not, but there's a building that's currently exists that we actually retrofit and that building itself would likely roll onto the tax books as early as 2025. And the additional buildings that would be constructed, if we're successful with the master plan, would each come online roughly a year after that and continue until we were able to develop the campus.
And the full campus is 15 buildings or 10?
So that's an estimated number. It's not something that we can commit to at this time. We've looked at a number of different site layouts, so options are, our buildings are approximately 250,000 square feet each. And depending on how those buildings fit in the site, depending on the aspects of the master plan, and obviously the approval by Salem Township of that master plan, that's the point at which we would know exactly how many buildings and what size.
And actually, so not totally paying attention, the year, the length of time to complete the campus?
Roughly five to seven years. It's a pretty aggressive timeline. The data center infrastructure is essentially computer networking equipment. It houses cloud services. And we have an existing demand for machine learning and artificial intelligence as well as typical cloud services like financial support, data processing, storage, storage of things like photos and videos, just about anything on your iPhone is stored in the cloud. So we have an existing demand that tells us we need a certain amount of infrastructure and our folks will work as quickly as possible to get those buildings in place. So the faster we can train and qualify folks to build those buildings, that's as fast as we'd like to bring them online.
I'm going to keep going.
We're going to meet again, right?
Yes, absolutely. This is...
Let's get a question.
This is informational, although when we come back, we'll certainly have the opportunity to ask for the school board to approve a resolution for tax abatement. Would be the same as what the township approves and what it would be asking Luzerne County to approve. That abatement is intended to offset a portion of the cost of infrastructure that will help construct those data centers. So for example, fiber infrastructure will spend about $350 million to put fiber in the ground and support the site itself. So the tax abatements will not cover the cost of that, but they'll help to offset a portion of that.
You've already run it through a portion of the area for...
A portion of the fiber.
Yes.
And the fiber will come from Virginia and other states to support our other networks.
And I understand cloud systems, but you know, even vehicles, autonomous vehicles are coming out of, and you need so much cloud space. So I'm aware of all that. The number of employees don't affect the school district unless we're going to get some of the students because we don't get the income tax, right? That goes to the state and the local, we don't get the income tax. What I find, I didn't want to say that, I was going to wait. Amazon is one of the richest companies in the world and we're coming here to one of the poorest, 100 poorest school districts in the state. And you're bringing up two days before we vote on our budget to raise your taxes to give one of the richest companies in the world a tax break. So I just got to wrap my head around that, but I understand.
Yeah, it's a great question. I would say that it is much, much more than a tax abatement, meaning the folks that you saw in the video today, Governor Youngkin said it, I think in the very first sentence, $13 for every dollar invested. So every dollar invested results in $13 back to the community. I know it's hard to believe.
It's ugly.
But the reality is the tax abatement is only for a portion of the time and it's only for a portion of the total tax bill. Those properties right now are, I think we looked at an example of one property that was assessed at about $165,000. When you factor in the, you know, the Luzerne, the county ratio, bring it to fair market value, it's generating about $3,000 in tax revenue each year. So if we were to purchase that property and not build data center infrastructure on it, obviously there would be no abatement. If we were to construct infrastructure, or anybody for that matter, were to construct infrastructure, that additional tax revenue above and beyond is made possible by costs borne for site development. So it would translate to for roughly $100 million in fair market value, for every $100 million in fair market value, a piece of property, it would generate over $1 million back to the school district, 1.2 based on current mileage. So I guess there's a way to look at it without the development, without the investment, and then the tax revenue made possible by the investment. What you're likely to see based on the build plan would be for incremental increase in tax revenue as all the buildings come online, then a plateau probably a short period of time where they're still all in an abatement period. And as they roll off that abatement period, we'll see another increase, significant increase in tax revenue. So I think it's important to consider the specific tax dollars as well as the impacts in the community from investment, school system and jobs created. Folks who are currently leaving town for other jobs will have the opportunity to stay here.
I'm trying to be nice. So I'm done with you.
I'm not going to...
I know you guys can be a great neighbor. So I know that Amazon really takes care of school districts and I know you guys can be really good neighbors.
I have some questions, you know, I, you're talking about abatement, I think you just answered it kind of, that 10 years, that's not for the entire project. You're looking at as you stage it, like say you're building a per building?
Each building would have its own schedule.
I see, I read the article, like you said, you recently, the township supervisors, you're estimating 400 to 600 jobs, which is a great thing. How many of them jobs are going to be based here locally, working in Salem Township five days a week?
So they would all be, the direct AWS jobs would all be located at the site. I don't know if the power plant is still at full capacity, but as I recall, it's up to 500 folks direct, then an additional 500 during outage, is that right?
Right. But I mean, to staff these facilities here, because I know you're talking about like that, you know, doing computer work like that, anyone of an internet connection, a computer, you'd be drinking hot days out in Seattle and still do the same job whether you're here in Salem Township.
Yeah, apologies, I misunderstood your question. All of those jobs would be located here. It is not based on a model where folks are operating the facility 100% remote. It does, it's a hyperscale data center infrastructure requires folks to be on-site and maintaining that equipment 24/7. So they will all be here.
So the 400 to 600 that you quoted in the article, that is not your facility, that's your facility and talent, is that what?
Yes, so our data center campus would be completely separate from talent, from the power generating entity. So we're not tied together at all. But the information, the numbers that I gave you tonight are all specific to that campus. And we are anticipating several hundred jobs created directly attributable to the data center infrastructure on the...
Do you have a ballpark on how many jobs, or the people that are actually running that data center, where it's security, monitor computers, whatever?
Sure. This is industry average for hyper-scale data center, roughly 25 jobs per building directly supporting AWS infrastructure and about that same number of contractors and vendors supporting things like security, HVAC, mechanical, electrical.
So picking up those buildings, give or take, you have about 250 people on-site at full capacity. Just use round numbers.
I would say that at full capacity, that's a concern in the estimate.
When you do your construct, you do construction, are you looking at hiring global contractors as much as possible?
Absolutely.
I've been down this road before, several corporations. I know what's going on up there at Talon now, the promises that were made, they're buying properties out for noise mitigation. For us, I mean, I see the 70% offer, I mean, as you tell, brought up perfectly, one in 104 schools in the state. Are you guys willing to make a guarantee, say by 2030, we will have X number of jobs on-site, we'll provide the district with the STEM research and all that? I mean, if we're going to go in this, it's going to benefit the entire community, I think the only need to do this is a partnership where, all right, we're going to give you tax relief, but at the end of the day, we need community sustaining jobs right here in our backyard. I mean, at the end of the day, it benefits the entire community because you can't really say it benefits the district, you're not, because you can't control if someone's going to live here, live with Bloomsburg or Vandico. I mean, yeah, all of that.
Exactly. And I'll be perfectly honest with you, we won't be successful unless we can work together with the school district to develop that pipeline of talent to deliver. I mean, it is essential to us. We are committed to partnering with the community, with the school district, with the township, and likely the broader region to make sure that there are opportunities to educate folks who are in the community college system and may be interested in moving to Burbank and living here because of the opportunity. I can, I can have Rich speak to the existing arrangement with Talon and tax revenue for that facility. What I can say is that we do have commitments that we would be prepared to make as a community partner in advance of tax revenue generated. I'm not sure what that construct looks like outside of the resolution, but we can certainly explore it. Certainly understand that those agreements and those commitments on the side of both parties are important to provide insurance that we are...
Because if you're going to give 70%, I'd like to say, all right, you're guaranteed you're going to have 150 jobs by 2030. Just throw some arbitrary out there, just for example.
And the reality is that there's, I mean, if we don't invest and generate taxable facilities and buildings, there is no, there's no tax bill to lay. By virtue of the fact that we're coming to an agreement that allows us to build those facilities and run the infrastructure, it does incentivize us to go forward.
Would you also be willing to do an agreement that you're not going to appeal the assessment when these come off of the tax walls? Because it's already happened with twice with $1,000, the agreement went on the books and it's also happened in the boxy. Because I mean, we go through this whole process and then, oh yeah, by the way, these, you know, these buildings are 15 years old, so they're going to be worth a fraction of what, now we're going to have a court battle on our hands with the assessment values.
I cannot speak to assessed value of our property in Salem Township, or even Luzerne County, or quite frankly, even in the state of Pennsylvania, because we have never built infrastructure in the state. So our team has no ability to estimate what that tax revenue could be. All I can tell you is that per every $100 million in real property, what the estimated value is. I can give you a sense of the tax, the relationships that we've had with other communities where we invest. We typically like to work with the assessor so that there's some transparency between what we're constructing and what the assessor is appraising, but I have no way of estimating or projecting what an assessment could be.
I'm 100% behind your project. I think anything we can do to bring good family sustained jobs, this area is a great thing. But at the end of the day, I have a tax base that's struck them to pay for, if they only have McDonald's, so I got to look them in the eyes and says, all right, we're going to get this and maybe we'll, you know, make it all work for everybody.
I would say that the plans for this campus equate to several billion dollars in capital investment. And it is likely that that several billion dollars in capital investment will result in... several hundred million dollars in fair market value, in real property assessed.
So we also got a reminder, so is that all, but as majority of that stuff that's going in there, like all the computer equipment does in effect, we also get value for tax purposes.
Correct.
I, uh, I just want to make sure I heard a few things from, if you said that the abatement is a rolling schedule, so the first building starts today and the next building starts, and then, did you say ten years?
No, the first bill, the, the first building, uh, if all goes well with approval of the master plan, we would be underway for construction in the, the fourth quarter of this year and, uh, and hopefully finish construction by the end of two thousand twenty-five.
Right.
So that would be on the two thousand twenty-six tax books. So we'll have the existing building, two thousand twenty-five, and then new buildings beginning two thousand twenty-six. And likely, um, finish a building every six to eight months until, uh, we're fully downtown.
And so if you, the first building starts in two thousand twenty-five, when would that come off the abatement?
Twenty thirty-five.
Okay, and so we would gradually increase from there. And even if we did what Salem Township did, we're still talking a significant amount of money for the community per building, correct? So we're, we're looking at either zero or a lot. Kind of, it's almost like, uh, investing in a property where we're using somebody else's money to do it, similar to that.
The, uh, the example that, um, that I mentioned, uh, one of the, one of the properties within the Lurde District, fair market value is currently a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Property taxes, uh, paid each year on that, on that property, two thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Right, and a conservative, not a robust, commercial state building, five hundred dollars a square foot, not counting infrastructure or per land or, uh, big building on.
I haven't done the math on that.
I'm, I'm just, I'm by experience.
But I can tell you, for a hundred million dollars in fair market value, um, it, it, the property would generate one point two million. So it, so you're going from roughly three thousand to over a million dollars. Again, that's based on, uh, that is for every hundred million dollars of fair market value. I don't know what the data centers will appraise for, but I think that's, that's probably a conservative estimate.
And what I'll just add as well is, is one of the issues you've had with, with Talon is, you know, Talon is taxed under per, the Public Utility Realty Transfer Act, where a lot of their money is taken from the localities through local real estate taxes and then distributed across the state.
No, 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 no more.
Oh, no more?
Hasn't changed until like twenty-five years.
Oh, well, that's good.
Probably for a long time.
Well, good.
Yeah, they be regulated.
Well, that's good, so, so my, my other point was, um, so, uh, there are thirty-seven parcels here, and Becky talked about the one where, you know, based upon our analysis of the, of the market value, it was approximately twenty-nine hundred dollars, three thousand dollars in, uh, tax revenue on a yearly basis. So if you, just rough estimate, multiply that by thirty-seven, you know, you're talking maybe a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. Whereas with, let's say, these conservative a hundred million dollars, you're talking about one point two million dollars in tax revenue every year. Even at an abatement schedule of, let's say, seventy percent, you're still going to make three times what the, if the note development figure on that, my, that most parcels, roughly.
Dude, I don't know whether you're answering, uh, Mr. Nesko's question, Ms. Ford. But I, I kind of took it that if you don't get the abatement, you're not doing the project, despite just buying this building for, what, sixty-nine million dollars?
Uh, there are, uh, there are some aspects.
Is that misunderstood?
It's a, it's a great question, and I'm happy to answer it to the best that I can. What I will say is that the property transaction was more than just the dirt. And it, it is contingent on our ability to accomplish several things, including approval of the master plan. And the township has, uh, has committed to the Lurde District and an abatement.
Subject to the district and the county approval.
Uh, I think the township is, is absolutely looking for the county and the school district to partner in that effort. Now, is it required by law? I would ask, I would ask Rich to answer that. What I can tell you is that we are evaluating sites in multiple areas of the state. And, and those areas are willing to offer an abatement schedule. So the, the extent to which we develop here.
Have you bought other buildings in those areas that you spent, what did you just place Talon for the building? The land and buildings you just bought?
I don't have the answer to that question.
Rich?
Nor would, nor would I disclose it in a public forum.
It's on the deed, on the affidavit of value.
It, it's a private transaction.
On the debt, it's recorded at the courthouse.
Oh, probably a paper, six hundred and fifty, no?
Right, so.
I, I, I wasn't involved in the negotiation of the deal, so I haven't seen the deed, and I haven't seen you be able to say, I don't know what.
What's on record at the courthouse is six hundred and fifty million dollars. So now, Ms. Ford, you're saying you're somewhat, um, attempting to get the district behind the April here. I understand that if you, if you don't do this, we've got other areas in the state that will do this. That's pretty much what you just said, correct? Correct?
I did say there are.
Okay, now, my question is, in those other areas, have you spent six hundred ninety million dollars in those other areas that you have already spent here?
I am not at liberty to disclose the details of this transaction or any other transactions that we may be evaluating in the state. It's just not something that I can share.
For the thirty-seven parcels that you mentioned, that's not any of the land that you bought from Talon. That's not in that six hundred ninety million, was it six ninety?
Six fifty, six hundred fifty.
Six hundred fifty million.
I'm not sure what your, what your underlying question is, is intended to accomplish.
Well, you mentioned that there are thirty-seven, you've mentioned there are thirty-seven parcels.
Thirty-seven parcels were included in the Lurde District that the township approved.
Has AWS purchased them as of today?
Yes.
So AWS, or whatever name the entity is, global Amazon owns them.
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're assessed as Am, I think it's Amazon Data Services in, of the thirty-seven parcels. If you, if you went to the county GIS, I think it's Amazon Data Services, I think it's the, uh, GIS.
What is the, the, the building and the land that you bought from Talon that, that wasn't under the name of Talon? I forget when I was at the courthouse.
Timos.
Timos, that's the six hundred and fifty million. Is that part of, is that land part of the thirty-seven parcels, or thirty-seven parcels in addition to the land?
That's all the land. The, the thirty-seven parcels are the one thousand sixty-two acres where JWS is on.
They already own them.
Which they close on in February, or Mar, March or February?
It was past March or February.
Twenty twenty-four, correct.
So you, that's why I say you already own them.
Correct, you're correct. Now, I, again, I don't know, as Becky said, if there are any conditions to, you know, to ultimately, in, in the agreement of sale, as to whether there are any conditions, you know, whether there's a reword or anything like that. I can't speak to, I haven't seen anything.
The, the Lurde program is really meant for property that's been distressed. Old buildings that are going to be used to refurbish, buildings that have been taken, new business coming in, creating jobs. That doesn't really fit what buildings you have up there now, or, or obviously new buildings that you're building, or.
Well, I think you would, and I, and I would say that.
How are they old buildings?
I would say that the amount of infrastructure required to develop those sites, water, for example, we will spend in excess of twelve million dollars to extend the water line from its existing location in, uh, in downtown Faraway to the site. Other residential areas and potential companies will benefit from that new infrastructure. But for this investment, I don't know when or to what extent that infrastructure would be developed. It certainly provides commercial opportunities and potable water for those folks. That's just one example. The site development costs in addition to that are part of necessary investments in the property and determination on dilapidation.
Yeah, right, it, it's not just deteriorated, it's also economically distressed. And just, you know, just as we're sitting here, we, we know that the district is one of the, uh, one hundred, one of the lowest, uh, you know, within the, uh, state here today. So, and, and the township has, really is the only entity which needs to make the determination whether it's security. And they haven't passed that resolution back until.
The school district has to approve the tax abatement.
Correct, no, no, correct, that's exactly correct. I'm just talking about whether it's deteriorated or not, that's a decision by the township.
Mr. Hess asked you about, you know, because we, we've run into this in the past, uh, where there's been some abatements, been some years ago, and the district's always gotten hurt by it, always has gotten hurt by it. So how can you assure the district and the taxpayers in the district that one of the wealthiest, if not the wealthiest company in the world is coming into a distressed area, my year definition, and isn't going to somehow not do what it said it's going to do? And at the end of the tenure period, as Mr. Hess indicated, you come back, you ask for a tax reduction, you appeal your tax. It happens time and time and time and time again, because you have that right to do. So even if you would agree not to do it, it wouldn't be binding. Even if you agree that so many people are going to be hired and you don't hire them. You think that property comes back off of tax abatement, gets re-taxed? No? So what you really want the district to do is, based, and I'm not saying that you're misleading anybody or anything like that, but historically, it has not worked out with the district, and the district is the taxpayers. These folks are all here, elected by taxpayers. Taxpayers are sitting in the back there, and they're wondering why, why is this corporate welfare being asked for? And isn't this corporate welfare? One of the richest companies in the world asking for a reduction?
I would not in any way characterize this as corporate welfare.
Tell me why not? Aren't you asking for a reduction in taxes?
We are.
And aren't you intending to make a profit from these buildings?
We are intending, we are intending to invest a significant amount of capital in the community.
And why are you doing that?
And by way of that investment, the community will prosper.
Why are you, why are you?
The school district will benefit, and the residents will see an appreciation in their individual property values. That I can tell you.
Oh, so their property values will go up and, and their taxes will go up, is that what you're saying? Is that how that works?
I guess if, if you would prefer, or if you would, if you would rather that, that property values don't go up, perhaps that could be seen as a, uh, as a negative.
All I, all I want is, I mean, quite honestly, I think everybody should pay all their own equal taxes based on the value of their property. And based historically what this district has run into, whenever they have given it an abatement under Lurde or any other law, it's come back and they've been hurt by it.
I, I think that it, I think that is very unfortunate. It is not our intent at all.
Well, it was not their intent either, I'm sure.
I understand, and, and I, I think that there are opportunities for us to provide those assurances to the school district and to the broader community.
And also, I'll just add to that, I mean, keep in mind, this is going to be a transformative project. I mean, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars worth of investment, uh, within the community. It's not like Amazon's going to come and put this and then leave ten years later, you know, like you would, when you consider with respect to a warehousing facility or something like that. I mean, just as Becky had said, they're going to put three hundred million dollars investment into, into fiber optic cable alone. So, you know, they're looking for more of a partner, maybe not sure with their development, rather than, uh, you know, uh, uh, you know, someone who's just going to, you know, take punch cans.
Well, that's always the nice word to say, we're partnering with people. You're partnering with someone.
But it's, yeah, but it's the truth. I mean, I mean, it's the truth, just as, as Becky indicated, I mean, the, the company's going to come in, they're going to sponsor programs at the local community college, they're certainly willing to do that with respect to, uh, the school district. They want to, uh, make sure that the, that hires as much as, uh, the workforce locally as possible. So they are, and it really is a partnership more so than just, uh, if there's.
No guarantee that they, no guarantee that they can. If you don't want to take my word for it, take another community's word for it.
That they are going to hire local people, they can't guarantee that. I wouldn't expect that, I think, they can't guarantee that.
No, and I, and I think you're right, I don't think no one would be guaranteed.
The guarantee is that the taxes would be lowered for a certain period of time. That's the only guarantee that's going to occur.
Right, and, and I guess the, the question from the district's perspective is whether, you know, that, uh, the portion, the, the abatement is being sought is, is worth it in terms of the investment being paid in the community.
Mr. Bull, I'd, I'd interject a little bit, I, I do appreciate what you're saying, I, I appreciate the sentiment we have in Burnet, as Keith mentioned. Um, I do believe this is different, I don't believe this is corporate welfare. I mean, you have the infrastructure that's being proposed, you're talking about fiber coming through, you're talking about water coming through. These are things that can expand the entire, um, area, and if you look historically at Virginia, and at another location, I believe, if I, I researched AWS, uh, community impact, and there are, there is a trickle-down part to this, where other businesses can come in, Canful, HVAC, Electrical, all of these companies come in behind and benefit as well from the AWS.
This is definitely corporate welfare. This is corporate welfare at its true form.
But, but at some point, though, you have to look at how is this going to benefit the taxpayers as well?
It's not, I'm not, I'm not, hold on. That's what, these are all things that you need to ask at these meetings.
I, I understand, I appreciate you asking, I do. But we're still talking about a significant amount of money, even if it was, uh, a discount, a, a very significant amount. If they're doing what they're talking about, billions of dollars invested in the community, they're, even at thirty percent, it's a significant amount of money. And if even would, even if they did appeal in ten years, if even comes off, it's still going to be higher than what discounted rate was.
Mark, taking that theory, let's just hypothetically say that the buildings that they build there are taxed, where the district gets three million dollars a year, a lot, a lot of money. More money than we've gotten in the past.
Right.
But under this, their theory is, okay, you'll only get two million. You're going to say, well, two million's a lot of money. It absolutely is, not as much as three, though. What could you do with that extra million a year, every year, every year, every year? You're going behind, you're only getting two million a year, and two million a year, two million a year versus three, and three, three, three. So you cannot just look and say, well, it's still a lot of money. That's the same thing your grandfather ran into with PPL with the power plant, and he thought for sure that we were going to get a lot of money, and it didn't happen. And this is going to be very similar to that, if they don't follow through with what they're saying, and there's no way to force them to go through with it. That is the problem. Now, if you let them build the project, tax them, let them pay their taxes as they normally would, as everybody else in the community does, and then, after a while, they say, you know, like here, can we partner with you with something else? Can we do something? Sure, now you have a track record. And if their track record is very good, then you can do that type of thing. But why would you give something to, and I say this, I've said this every time over the thirty years, forty years I've been here, why do you give some, a tax abatement to somebody who you do not know, you do not have any experience with whatsoever?
I think you have to look at historical context with.
Well, that's what I am, and that's historical context.
With what they've done in two other communities and countries.
All I know is what's been done here.
But they have, what are?
Nope, that's what I said, and all the other ones, so that's happening.
I thought I was going to be bad, man.
I'm going to take a night off.
This is what, John, do I agree with everything you said, Mr. Bull? Thank you very much for speaking up.
I mean, this community has a history of promises being not kept. I mean, there's people in this room that will know the promises that were made when that UGAP was built. Free electricity, no property taxes, we all have worked out. Promises were made when we passed gaming in this state, no property taxes. We all pay our property taxes every year, we know how well out it worked out. So, they said, we're going to do, we're going to go do this, we need some guarantees that, you know, this needs to be a partnership, but it needs to be a partnership of not promises, actual guarantees.
I appreciate what you're saying. Let Rich and I take a look at what we put in the, in the LERTA recommendation. And when we come back to you, perhaps we can explore some opportunities to, to make this more of a commitment on our end.
I'd say that could help with a couple of forums, I mean, we need our fair share of development, but we don't need, you know, we want to make sure we're not getting a corporate raider into this state here. I'm one of the few sports fans that actually detest the fact that Mr. and Mrs. Taxpayer built these billion-dollar stadiums when they expect us to spend five dollars on a hot dog, fifteen dollars for a beer. You're a billionaire, buy our own stadium.
Yeah, just to answer your question before, I have seen a number of LERTA resolutions that build in, like a factor in terms of employment or things like that as well, into them. So, that's something that's, that's commonly done, and we certainly look at it to see whether we, that, that the circumstance, but it's, it's commonly done.
Does it get specific as to what stem, steam, type of labs, type of programs, type of career pathways is expected from the infrastructure of our curriculum?
Typically, we don't, only because there's no, there's no cookie cutter approach to every single community. So, what, what we would do would be to understand what specifically the needs of the school district are, so that we can bring together the resources that are most beneficial or most needed. So, the next step for us would be to come back with, I think, probably some, some more affirmative definitions in the LERTA project. And then, really have a scoping session with the school district and other groups in town to understand what the community needs are. We've already done some preliminary assessments and we have some good ideas, but I think it would be worth bringing some of my team members from our workforce development team and our educational programs in here.
There's, I just have a couple, I'm just going to go back here. So, you said several hundred jobs once all the buildings are completed. While they're being completed, five to seven years of construction jobs. How many, how many people do you usually have, like, I mean, you said, like, obviously the water, the infrastructure, like, how many workers?
There, there are some statistics out there. Virginia's done some work. Typical data center industry investments generate roughly four to six construction jobs per single direct job. So, if, if we generated a hundred jobs, the associated construction jobs would be four to six. And again, you know, that, that would be for the operations-
And then, what's the total square footage of each building?
Each building is roughly two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. I have a question to pay you back on the note. So, I live in Virginia, about the past thirty, thirty-five. So, there, the, how many people do you employ there at the average days? I mean, this seems to be the average. A little smaller, smaller, it's more about fifty, so, or so people. Yeah, that's a, it's a great question. The way that the legacy data infrastructure evolved in Virginia, it was, it was more spread out on a lot of different parcels. So, there, there may be a few more folks that work in those buildings on a per-building basis. In other words, if, if, rough example for, for this site or, or this infrastructure is twenty-five, probably somewhat closer to thirty jobs in, in our facilities that are more spread out, because they don't have that campus environment.
So, this is considered a campus environment or not, the one that you're running?
Yeah, this is a, this is a larger campus environment than the legacy infrastructure in Virginia. We gravitated towards that design because it allows us to buffer and screen the site on the outside and concentrate the buildings on the inside, less visible.
So, during the building process, how do you, is there an RFP type of service that goes out for the building? Are you looking at companies that only have X amount of, sort of, funding available?
We work with general contractors on, on the primary contract and then work to identify vendors and suppliers locally and support. I don't, I don't know where we are in terms of contracting for, for this site. What I can say is that our intent would be to have the equivalent of a, a jobs fair and a, and a fair to help, help identify and, and provide opportunities for local businesses.
Okay. So, then, I'm sorry, so going back to my first question, without how many people, because there's a lot of numbers in Florida. So, at the end of the day, how many people will AWS employ per building? Is it several hundred or is it more like fifty, seventy?
Per building is typically, it's an estimated number, twenty-five, that work directly for AWS. And then you have additional folks who are dedicated to that individual building full-time that work for a security vendor, or a fiber vendor, or HVAC, mechanical, electrical. So, they're, they're coming to the site every day and, and but for the construction of that building, they wouldn't otherwise have a job. Or perhaps that individual would have a job, but the job itself at that data center wouldn't exist.
Anybody else? You guys have anything else for us?
Not, not for my end, no.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, nice for your time today, yeah, thanks very much, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Hopefully you will take pleasure in your time.
With that, leaving the journal regular meeting. We have one, we have one more item for executive. Motion to adjourn.
What's the executive session for?
We just didn't finish, we ran the list.
Is there any public comment at this point?
Yeah, you got to announce.
What's the executive session for?
No money?
Okay, I heard Messina ask a question. Conservative estimate, they're talking a million dollars taxes per building per year, fifteen buildings, fifteen million dollars, they want a thirty, they want seventy percent abatement. So, they want you to forgive ten, eleven million dollars a year. So, over ten-year period, that's a hundred million dollars. What could you do with a hundred million dollars?
Bill Milledy.
Oh, wow! Very good, Jeff. Hey, Bill, what could you do with a hundred million dollars for this school district? How, how about we could lower taxes for the people that have lived here fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years?
You can't do that. You can't do people's, their livelihood.
Okay, so we don't raise our taxes for, we don't raise our taxes for the next twenty, twenty-five years probably? Hundred million dollars, I mean, you, you people do a lot of money with it, a lot of, a lot of good in this community with that. You know, they're talking about, they want to increase your educational value, support their plan, you get the VOTEC school right down the road that, you know, just underwent a minor renovation that could supply, begin to supply them the people they need in HVAC, construction, computer programming, you have a computer, you have a CAD pro, CAD program down here that they could help with design. You have a great VOTEC school that could help with this also. I didn't hear anybody speak up for that. This is something that, you know, could really help us out. But we have to let, we have to let them pay their fair share. You know, you're, you know, and I don't think anybody will argue that. Some of you, you know, might benefit directly or indirectly with the business you own, or the business you work for, you might direct, you know, you know, benefit from. But still, you know, it comes down to, do we give them welfare? Or do we do good for the citizens of the Burwick Area School District? Thank you.
Somebody said something about people and how many jobs we're going to have and so forth. All I want you to think about in that aspect is, you have Glenbrook, you have Celebrity. Fifty percent of the workers at both those places do not even live in Pennsylvania. They come in for a six-week period and they take the money and they run. And that's what's happening. So, yeah, it sounds good of trying to bring those people in here, but you also have the Dollar Tree warehouse, how many of them are being bussed in to work a twelve-hour shift but don't live in this district? And the second thing that I want you to think about is, this might be something decent for Burwick Area School District, but let's make sure it stays in Burwick Area School District. There are other ones that we all hear about that are very close to here. I just want to say, I hope they would stay in this district and not move down the road. We're up the road, we're over the mountain. That it stays and they work with this district and this district only. And that is something that we can put into an agreement. Just my two cents. Thank you.
Anyone else?
The elderly are the only ones that want to speak up.
So, before this, we had an executive session, we covered security items and a couple personnel items. And we're going to go into the executive session now. So, motion to adjourn.
What's this one for? What's this executive session for?
This executive session, personnel. Second on the journal. All in favor?